Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Cat TV's live coverage of Bennington's Town Meeting. From Bennington Fire Department here in Bennington, Vermont. The first Tuesday of every March, the Articles and the Elections of the Municipalities go in front of the voters along with budgets and issues of the day. Today, of course, we are live here the day after the meeting, which was the first virtual meeting, again, in Bennington's history, was done online from Cat TV and their website. But we are having in-person voting here today. There was a lot of early voting, as usual. Some of the differences, there are petitions required for elections, again, same as in the fall and for Articles. So, but pretty normal election for what's been going on last year. We do have one special election on the town ballots. I'm Greg Van Houten, your host. This is Matt Harrington at the Southwestern Vermont Chamber of Commerce. And so, we're going to talk about some of the issues of the day and go through some of the ballot articles. So, the special election this year is to fill the one-year-reign seat of Select Board Governor Bill Scully. He passed away this year. And when I worked for Bill and Ray Scully, 2006, when I first started my business, when he took over, it was a wonderful people, a great family, and very sad to lose Bill. When I was on the Select Board, I was very proud of the work that this community and municipality did to start converting over to renewable energy. That was probably Bill's greatest accomplishment, was the hydroelectric program he put together. He was instrumental in that. Oddly enough, and sadly as well, we lost Di Manita this past year, who was also a renewable energy pioneer from North Bennington. He came here years ago and started Power Guru, and was responsible for a lot of the community solar that we do grow things around. And then, of course, last April, we lost Tom Tate, who was my successor as Chair of the Select Board. We became friends through the Select Board. I was honored to work with Tom. Wonderful guy, faithful guy, and all of them, big Bennington proponents, you know, out there pushing anything that was pro-Bennington. So, we really miss them. We want to, I want to really dedicate this broadcast to them and their families and all the residents who are missing somebody and weren't able to breathe the way we're accustomed to it now, which is together.
And it should be noted that, you know, a year unlike any other year.
It really was.
And none of those same sort of results have sold yet.
No.
But I think just in general, Bennington has a level still. And then, as you said, right, the ability, even to do in-person, with COVID, kind of still on everybody's mind.
Right.
Because probably, when we find the results, that'll be kind of a theme under those voting boards.
I see. And I think we've learned a lot, and I think those three gentlemen exemplify, one, the best of Bennington, and two, what a lot of us have struggled with this past year, with our normal personal struggles and dealing with them in a very, very unusual year. So, thank you to them and to their families. We're going to switch to the issues of the day here. One thing I'd like to point out at town meeting day, if you are unfamiliar or maybe are new to Vermont, the school districts in Vermont are charter municipalities, just like a town. So, they have their own Board of Directors, their own budgets, and their own Articles, and they have their own ballots. So, when you vote, you have a ballot for each of the school districts as well as your town. Those school districts, district budgets make up about two-thirds of our property tax rate, with the municipality leaving out a third. So, it's a very important part of that. They're very important offices. We do see less competition in those races very often, for various reasons. But it's good to see some new faces on those boards in the last couple of years, and that's energy. And I was just telling Matt, I was looking at U.S. News surveys on education, and Vermont's pre-K, pre-12 school system is ranked number four in the United States right now, which is extremely high. It's really, really wonderful. So, you know, you're never done. If you're schools, everybody wants to see something happy or whatever, you know?
And I think something that was surprising to voters this year, I would assume, because anybody that sees a decrease in budget, they've got to be surprised when they get to their ballot.
Sure.
But we saw a decrease in both schools. So, that's kind of an interesting news, people seeing a decrease in budget.
Right. And, you know, some of that position was just haven't been filled through the last year because of COVID and other reasons. Of course, salaries and benefits are in the 70% range of any budget in a municipality. You're basically, you know, it's your neighbor's salary and benefits that you're paying most of, in terms of the operating expenses, capital budgets and things like that. So, the school systems, we have the Southwestern Vermont Union Elementary School budget and elections. We have the Mount Anthony. We have the Southwestern Vermont Regional Technical School District, and of course, the town of Bennington.
And that saw a lot of young candidates as well this year. The, what used to be the C and C.
Right.
Now, it's packed a lot of, a lot of young candidates. I say young, under maybe the, which is exciting, because we saw them out. There's a banner already called, they're off the main street, very exciting crew that's coming through the ranks, which is encouraging.
It is encouraging to see that enthusiasm. Technical Center is a wonderful facility. I've also heard people say it's underutilized, that a lot of the students, our parents or both don't realize what's there, so much of the value of it. We lost the graphics program there a few years ago, they're only just, kids going into it. But they have CNC technology. My company just bought a CNC cutting machine. You know, that's a great thing to have in the community. There's a lot of companies in this town and area that have CNC technology. You've got woodworking, forestry, cosmetology, culinary arts. I know I'm missing town.
Well, I think very skill-based.
Yeah.
So, always have an asset to us.
It's really, yeah, it's really difficult to find young people with good skills. I can say, I could really use somebody handy, you know?
Well, you know, we should note to the audience viewing, you know, we're just waiting for people to wrap up. Polls have closed. And right now, Greg and I, we're just, we're stalling the cast and group with the town office to give us the final vote. So, stick with us as we kind of go through this ballot and the issues, and even what the community needs and is looking for post-Bennington, as we kind of come up to a final result. And as we said, Cassandra will hop on as soon as she is ready. And I know they're tabulating right now, kind of look around the road.
It's amazing how fast they do. It's usually about a half an hour until our town clerk, Cassandra Rovoe, is ready to tell us how the elections turn out. So, pay attention to that, we'll come to that.
Question that I keep hearing come up, and just in recent days, do you think the process will be faster because there's been so many mail-in or draw-up ballots? I kind of saw that in the last presidential election.
Right.
More people voted. And a lot of the absentee ballots were able to be counted faster and sooner, providing faster results. I wonder if town meetings will be successful?
The way I understand it, you can't count the ballots until the day, but you can start counting the absentee and the early ballots early in the morning, as soon as polls open. So, those can be fed through the day as they have opportunities. So, they may very well be tabulated, you know, if your majority of votes came in that way, then we could be ahead of schedule.
Maybe, especially for the, I think, the ones that people are most interested in, walk us through maybe some of the Select Board, people that are running, and the difference even between a three-year seat, a one-year seat, that can be kind of confusing.
Sure. Well, Bennington is fairly unique in this state. Many states, most towns in Vermont either have a three-person select board or a five-person select board. And in many of those seats, it does really terms, the balance from one to ten to three years per seat, and you run for a particular term. Bennington years ago went to a seven-person select board, and all seven members run for three-year seats. And those are alternated so that there's two, two, you know, year to year. So, there's always, every year, there are seats up, but everyone's running for a three-year seat on the Select Board. The odd one this year, of course, is going after Governor Scott, which is a one-year seat.
So, that's what, we would normally see.
You would not normally see a one-year seat. Right, that's what you know. The Select Board has the opportunity to appoint someone or to set to an election. They decide a whole different run to an election. In the past, they, when there was resignation, they appointed Brucey Clark, because he left by one vote. And if someone had to resign their seat because they were losing their work, the Select Board opted to give Brucey Clark his own off board. So, that is the discussion of the Select Board. So, when I ran for the Select Board in 2012, which of course, I think was the last time we had a frigid cold town meeting day.
It was pretty frigid.
I'm always jealous when I get here and it's a nice day. The high that day was five degrees, and I sat outside with everybody. One of my funny stories from the day was, I had just had knee surgery, and I brought a stool, and I sat on a stool while I greeted voters. And the Bennington banner, I had a photo spread of the day, and in my picture, they felt obligated to explain to people that I had knee surgery to explain the stool.
It wasn't just you sitting on the stool.
It wasn't the fact that I was smart enough to bring a stool for 12 hours, sitting outside in zero degree weather. It was that I, you know, they wanted to know I wasn't just playing. But that, I think that explained to me how much people in Bennington want to know that you want that seat. They want people who want that seat, and are willing to work for that.
Talk to us a little bit, what was that like? What is, if somebody were interested in that, you know, saw the issues, saw the voting trial, and there will always be seats available coming up, so what did somebody need to do? What was your experience, and you said, I want to do that?
My experience before being on the Select Board was actually several terms I was the Board Directors for the Better Bennington Corporation. It was really my introduction to town politics and working. I had worked in Manchester for several years, and I had started a business in Bennington. I joined the BBC as a downtown business at the time. We'd started in the All Puck Hotel, second floor. And so, I started getting out, and I was trying to be on a board. I looked into it, and I thought it was a great opportunity to get to know the organization, maybe have some influence on the direction of downtown. So, as I was on that board, I started meeting people, getting involved, and seeing, you know, very often, like any small town, you see the same faces from organization to board to board to board, and you start to get the picture that not everybody can or is willing to do that. And, you know, when you have the opportunity, you know, it's worth pulling your light and doing it. So, I was at a point where there was no one on the Select Board who represented local business or local manufacturing. I had been to a couple of forums on, a lot of deposits and things like that, and no one from the Select Board was there. And I realized, this doesn't, this wasn't really a real house. I'm going to switch mics here, I'm sorry.
This mic is too hot. Too hot.
Can't imagine. So, thank you, Mike. So, where was I then? Oh, yeah, so, I started looking, you know, I got involved, and there was, there was an opportunity to run. There were smoking suits hanging on someone. I did run it and was elected. It took a lot of, and of course, I noticed it was going out, meeting people, getting into different circles, finding those people that you just don't know. I knew a lot of people from that, but there were a lot of people I didn't know. So, it was a matter of climbing into those circles, seeing what's important to them, and bringing those somebody to light and weighing them. And also, at the board level, I would like to make it clear of what's going on in business and everything. There was an article in Upstate that the banner has been, quoting you, with a lot of the things that are made and everything, people don't realize. International products. I see articles all the time, so many things that we make, we don't credit for, but people don't realize that's supposed to be right here and right there.
I just have this conversation about Vermont in general. Name another state where you can lift off bourbon snowboards, Orbis line rods, coffee, serious coffee, eight cups.
Sure.
Vermont has something else, dark colored socks. I mean, just Vermont alone, I can't think of another state where you like the community to this thought, so many.
Right. Forget about beer.
Yeah.
You know, beer, spirits, things like that. The arts, you know, I mean, the people, the arts names that come from this town, this town and this state. I've always been a big fan of the arts. My company serves the arts community to a great extent. You know, and our schools have some great arts programs, great music and theater programs. I'm always proud of Bennington, these budgets, but the people don't gut that. You know, they're not going after those arts. So many towns that tried to save money, it's sacrificial hour, and the arts get cut. And it's such a big part of our economy, it's such a big part of our culture and history. So, you know, I always try to applaud the schools for maintaining that, and the taxpayers for backing that. That's a really big thing. I love to use Tom D., who's the president of the hospital, to, as the poster child for the arts here. So many employers tell me that when they try to hire a candidate who comes to Bennington, the first question is, what will my spouse do? Where will my partner work? Where will they go? If we didn't have an arts community, Rita D. isn't going to want to come here. She's a wonderful, renowned artist, and she's coming in, you know, with a medical profession, and she's perfectly, you know, comfortable in here. You can see her artwork all around, and she was accepted, and, you know. And it's, you know, those people need two jobs when they come, and they need two lives.
To your point, you know, whether they're a professional artist that gets paid or just, you know, life after work, which I think broke Vermont is famous for, and I think, to your point, you know, without a vibrant culture and art center, what do you do on the weekends?
Right.
So, you're looking for the music, you're looking for the theater, you're looking for art and galleries and things like that. Bennington has done a perfect job. Talk to us a little bit about, there's a new one, Article Two on the ballot, for Penny for Parks.
Penny for Parks?
That's kind of an interesting match, maybe in a line of this culture.
Yeah, you know, years ago, a bunch of citizens got together, and they built that little playground up at Bill Park, and did a bunch of work out that going. When I was on the Select Board, we put the, we expanded the frisbee golf. There's a bunch of things as well, and that's, the playground's in disrepair, needs replacement, basically, and there's some expenses. So, what happens here is, the Select Board could just increase the taxes for parks and say, you know, we need this money for parks to put on the air. Sometimes, especially in a year when you're not sure how many people actually worked this year or whatever, you leave it to the voters. You say, look, the parks needs money. We have the regular budget to maintain holdings and grounds, but we really could use a kick. Do the voters want to put some more money into the general fund? And this is, you know, a small impact on your taxes, but it can make, in the long term, a big difference in the investment in the parks.
And the parks have expanded. I mean, I think that that is a milestone at Bennington for the last, I mean, it's been two years, with the splash pad, the pocket park.
Sure.
More renovations on Stark Park. And so, yeah, we could see where, A, we want our parks to be great and awesome and perfect for them, and B, we're increasing the capacity of those parks.
So, more parks means there's bigger voting for the parks. You know, and that, that all dates back great down to 2012 community meetings that the Select Board hosted. The year I was elected, they happened, people are, joined the board, and there were subsequent meetings after, that put several committees together, one of which became the Military Arts Council. It was property work, the tenant 101, and the renter 101 and stuff. One of them was specifically targeted at increasing the parks downtown, increasing green space downtown. So, here we are, 2021, and these parks are there. You know, I mean, that's how long it takes, you know? And you can't do this simple, you know, do it wrong. It's unfortunate that you can't sometimes, but it shows the commitment of some people to make these things happen. Generosity in community members' businesses, hard work of community members, and as proud workers. And we've got them done. We've got some beautiful parks, and then Splash Park opens this spring, it's going to be a big, it may hit one day. Yeah.
Kids will run there. We had turned on, and I think that over, and it might have been over 50, it might not have been over 50.
Yeah, it was a nice pool that the kids are in the water. I'm saying, you know, I know there are a lot of people who don't understand what it is. It's not a water pool, you know, it's just an amazing, you know, fountain where the water shoots up like little geysers, and if it's a hot day, it's not fun to just walk through it. And kids love to just wait, like, see what's going on.
Right, before we went live, when I was talking about that Bennington is just really an employee where, and I mean, we see daily now where Governor Scott is changing vaccine requirements and that moving forward.
Yeah.
The President of the United States said there will be enough vaccines, did everybody vaccinated by May, that just came out today.
Saw that.
So, moving solid and forward. And I think they're, you know, it's some cautious optimism, and Bennington, if there wasn't for COVID. Even now, after knowing that the former middle school in Bennington is being rebuilt, obviously, the Puck, which is the news of Vermont. The distillery farm rode through, just let go over the weekend, down in the weekend. So, there's a lot of excitement going on in the two-day park.
There is, and you know, there's a stage at that park. We've had makeshift stages there before. This is now a permanent stage that donated by the Thompson family, another longtime, you know, proponent of Bennington at that time, you know, alongside Gary Gordon Bowling Alley. And, you know, they were so excited. I was privileged to play the first song on that stage, I was very happy to do that for them.
Of course, it's namesake.
Yeah. It's Vermont, was the first song, yes.
Of course.
Of course, what else would I play? But you've got those things. So, you know, again, there's another article, you know, the Fifth Irony, looking for a mayoral form of government. The question is, is this stuff happening at a pace that satisfies you? Or do you think there's enough behind it? Or do people think that, you know, one elected politician who's going to run might think better? You know, that's a philosophy to get the bell stuck.
And this, and this keeps, and this keeps coming up. I think this is number five over the last ten years.
This is number five, yeah. And it's interesting, this is, you know, there's other towns, Saratoga, Pittsburgh, that have mayoral forms of government, that are, that are trying to switch to a town manager form of government, for professional managers, as opposed to political managers. I, you know, it's always interesting to see how people view their own particular situations. So, I'm curious to see how that turns out tonight.
If we are, if we are having people, just tune in, just know that we're waiting on Cassandra and the town of Bennington to finalize the votes.
It's 50.
It's close. Stick with us, we're gonna, we're gonna poll or commentate through this.
We're here in about eight minutes or so.
Looks like Mike is saying eight minutes and 32 seconds till we get, Cassie up here. Again, the town of Bennington, the great staff of the town of Bennington have been working, you know, if they, if they, if they don't already work hard on days like this, they're also receiving a plethora of mail-in votes and ballots and absentee, which is kind of a new thing in the COVID world. I know, my fiancee and I, we actually liked that. We liked it for the presidential election in November. We liked it for this March election. We liked to sit down and discuss and look through and research. So, that might be a new wave, but a lot of people are getting comfortable with the mail-in vote.
I think you'll see it, it's always been a fairly popular thing for town meeting day. The uncertainty of the weather alone is enough to get people to vote early.
March 2nd in Vermont.
Right. And it can be very dicey. And, you know, there are people who traditionally get their ballot mail to them and vote early and make sure they get that in there. I've done it when I found me out of town, or if I know it particularly busy, and I decide to take it at the end of the day and realize I didn't get it back to the office in time. And I think you're going to see a lot of people exposed to it, that if, you know, especially this morning, I can, your garbage cans blowing all over the floor, saying, you know?
Well, there is a windstorm, so you don't have to throw that in there. Any feeling, I mean, we've seen, come up on this Article Four or Five around cannabis marijuana. Obviously, the state legislator moved forward over the last couple of sessions to legalize police personal ownership of marijuana. Any indication there of, this is asking the voters?
Well, I think the big question is, you know, when recreational sales of marijuana come around, the state wants to make sure, very sure they have it under control, and they're only doing it. Is Bennington the proper place to have cultivation facilities, retail facilities, or a combination of the two? You know, we are the regional economic center, so, you know, 30, 40 miles, 30 is depending on which direction you're going in. So, if not here, then where? You know, but, but that, you know, the states aren't giving towns the opportunity to say yes and no. And I, you know, you can sympathize with somebody if they don't have a real downtown, they have one or two buildings, and one of them becomes a very busy, you know, cannabis place, but they want that because they kind of get very busy. I drive through Massachusetts a lot, and see like around the holidays, you know, people just like the liver store.
Everybody shopping, right?
Yeah, you know, I think it probably makes some family dinners a little less.
More enjoyable.
But yeah, so that's, that's a really interesting article that's come up. We of course have the, we have an article to reduce the Select Board salary.
I saw that, Article Six.
Yeah, I don't know where that came from. They don't make a lot. It basically pays your expenses to conduct your business. And some of them, if they feel that it's, they don't need it, don't need it. But I think for people who weren't financially, you know, uncomfortable, it helps them serve their community, you know, and the freight expense of running for an election or traveling to meetings or, you know, taking the day off.
I'd be interested in, when we continue to see how people run for these seats, you know. There's a household conversation going on at my house, always about public servants showing the capability to, you know, more, just because you're sacrificing whether that's family time, work time, travel, or just effort, the, the voters expect those people to help look. And you start to look at something like this, and I'm sure, Greg, you being on the board, and you divide 1,300 among the hours that it's going on, by getting a less than minimum wage.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, it's not, there's, there's no calculable wage on per hour. It's just, it's two things. One, it's a sign to offset some of the expenses, and two, you are an employee of the town of Bennington. So, when you're on a Select Board, you do fall under the classification of employee, which covers you by insurance, bonding, you know, if a Select Board member were to run away with a till, the town is protected financially. That has happened in towns where, you know, you have, you have three people that are on the Select Board, and you have one who's gone on for 30 years, and he signs all the checks, or she signs all the checks, and, you know, and all of a sudden, somebody says, hey, I haven't seen a statement, and all of a sudden, you find out that they got financial trouble and they started to trade. It's a sad story, but it happens, it does happen. So, the towns protect themselves that way, by bonding their employees and making sure that they're protected.
I think I found, you know, the other piece, the other people were looking at that. Interesting that there's no, you know, there's no race, that everybody's running, there's nobody there, which has been an ongoing, by technical officials to run through a local school board. I mean, I love that town of Bennington, town of Powell, town of Shaftesbury, town of Woodford, you know, whether that's elementary school or it's the, not it's the union.
Right.
Everybody was running for the polls, and there wasn't even a single running it was. So, I think there's that continued feeling, you know. If you're interested in education, and you're interested in upbringing, children.
Education can be intimidating because there's so much that goes on at the state level for the budget. So much of the budget is dictated at the state level. The formulas start to get sticky, but if, if, you know, what it's, it's just to learn, you learn. Yeah. You know, when I was on the board, we made a very strong effort based on a study to try and get more incentive to students to understand what they're doing. We had two week budget meetings for the first time in a while, where the school system actually explained their budgets step by step, how to, and it is still here than just, we need this much money to pay, you know? But, you know, as you get to know it, it's not as intimidating as what people think. And, you know, it does take time. People always say it's a thankless job. It's really not. More people watch Cat TV than I understood. We're on 1085 on the television, we're on Facebook, we're on, you know, we're on YouTube. You can see these things, they can also, at their leisure, they don't have to watch a lot, and people do, and they do recognize it, they do appreciate it. You know, you get a lot of thank yous out there, and you do feel like you've done something worthwhile, so.
Well, I mean, you know, Greg, I'm sure there's even better prospects, we knew that with the national election, and I forget, the utilization of places like Cat TV, the public access channel, the ability to watch a soon call, even just legislatively, for a session.
Sure.
Topic, let alone the, the graphics class of Cat TV being at the Select Board, school board meeting, and MAU basketball game, they kind of do it all.
Right, yeah, the, the number of meetings they cover, and, you know, these sporting events and arts and all, that's how, it's just amazing, you know, how many things are there, are accessed. And, you know, we've got Bennington's talent coming up, which is collaboration with Cat TV, Bennington Banner, and, you know, I'm sure you'll be in the middle of that somewhere.
I have no talent, I have no talent, but standing in front of Cat TV camera.
You know, it's those kind of community collaborations that Cat TV brings to life and brings to your living room. And boy, this year, you know, not being able to go out as a physician, not being on the out as a physician, not being able to perform in front of people, and some of the things that Mike put together, Mike Butler did a great job with some collaborative music productions throughout the year, the holidays and the spring, try to raise money and awareness for Shaw Wester from a medical center. And, you know, their staff up there, I gotta tell you, with all they've been through up there, I was up there today, they smiled, they joked, they, you know, they're, they're sick at the hospital, they're in such good spirits, whether it's the vaccine clinic, or the testing clinic, or the regular hospital park. I don't know that I'd be as cheery.
Well, you know, I think we're remiss at any opportunity, but even on election day here in Vermont, to thank our frontline workers, especially our first. And as you said, Greg, I mean, the doctors and nurses, and even the leadership and administration.
The engineering.
People that's lived, the clean, the bathroom, everybody in the heart, they're doing a terrific job. This is unprecedented.
Yeah, it's crazy here. We've got five minutes to say until you're ready to go.
So again, we're, we're tired out there waiting. People have pulled out, and we're just waiting for the tremendous staff of the town of Benton. And the clerk really.
The town clerk's office oversees the elections with the PCA, and, and they always do a great job. I mean, after, you know, they've always have this thing wrapped right up, and I love, I just love watching them work. I've had people tell me that, you know, we have traditionally had one of the best town clerk's offices in the state of Vermont. I have no problem believing that. If you have questions for them, there's an election coming up, and you don't know what's going on, and you need information, they always have answers for you. They're patient, they're informed. They have the town website. You can download these ballots. I download my ballot from my cheat sheet right from the town website.
I stole mine from Cassie.
Yeah. And, and so, you know, that information's all there. If you want to know when the meetings are, if you want to know when select board meetings are, it's all posted on the website. Of course, you can't show up to them now, but they are, you can access them electronically. And one day again, we'll be back in the room.
Someday. So talk to us, as we come up on the five minute mark and even sooner, Greg, when you won, what's the next step? What are these candidates that are about to win and start to work on the select board? What are they about to run into? Is there a training course?
Sure.
That you run into?
And they're actually, I mean, what they run into is an incredibly efficient and professional staff that takes them under their wing and explains how everything works. You get to a meeting with the managers, all the managers in the town, you understand what their departments do, they explain their jobs, they explain what's on, what's on the schedule. You learn about the capital planning systems, you learn about what's coming up. You know, and one of the first orders of business is the reorganization of the board. You elect a chair or a vice chair. So you jump right in. April first, you're sworn in, and then you jump in both feet, and you have to, you have to reorganize the board and get going. There's a lot of things that, you know, are kind of on hold because the town has to get ready for town meeting day. They have to approve the ballots, they have to approve the budgets, and get these things ready for the voters. So when you come out of the reorganization, you're ready to go. You've got, you've got stuff waiting to be taken care of. In a year like this, you know, who knows what's, what's waiting on your table?
For you and how you meet, I mean, I'm sure there's a lot of Zoom calls and Zoom calls.
Yeah. And, you know, I have to give the select board a lot of credit. This, this was a tough year. They handled it very well. You know, they used their resources well. You were able to follow them on Cat TV, you know, and get answers. They made themselves very valuable in a time that they weren't trained for. I mean, there was no training for that, that I remember.
I, you know, I don't think people always remember, I should say. Maybe they recognize, maybe they hear it. But a lot of the select board kept all the meeting together to discuss things because that would be a public meeting. So often times when we're wanting, and we're saying, guys, aren't you meeting together before the meeting and having a pow-wow? You guys know what we are.
Correct. The select board meeting is the select board meeting. That's, that's the next time they've met since the last time you saw them. As a forum of a seven-person board is four people. So you cannot meet in a forum without warning it to the public, making the media aware of it, having public access. So you can, three select board members consider, have coffee, talk about things. When the fourth person comes in, somebody has to leave. They're in violation of the open meeting.
Which in, which in a small town, Mike can be walking into that coffee shop.
We have had, well, there were times when there are community events that you want to support, you get there, and the whole board's there. And you kind of scare yourself. You know, you want to make sure that everybody's not talking together, talking shop. And you're right, it does surprise people. Sometimes they'll come in and say, well, haven't you guys worked through that? It's like, no, this is the next time. You were here two weeks ago, this is the next time it's back. And, you know, sure, there's conversations between members, but you cannot leave the board without violating the rules. And people, you know, once they understand that, and that, again, that's all in the law, legal cities, the towns and the hand block, where select board explains all that conflicts and interests and things like that, you know. So it's all, it's all very clear, if you read it, you know, and it's all available to you. And it's a press tour. I always compare it to like going to college. You know, I mean, every, every two weeks, they're given a packet of two hundred to four hundred pieces of paper, or the equivalent, what's on equivalent to legal rule, and become somewhat of an expert on because there's something to vote on or something that you judge. You know, you're the board of health, you're the liquor board, you're, you know, you're in charge of a lot of things, the water board. So you can wind up working in a quasi judicial mode if there's a violation. There's a lot of different roles in the select board, okay? So you learn a lot. It's a really, really interesting role. And the select board, in the same way, there's a lot of things to learn. And it's, it's a crash course. It's, but it's very, it's very rewarding. So if you're thinking about it, I would, I would encourage people to talk to somebody who's on a board, you know, talk to somebody in the town clerk's office or whatever, see what's on board. Maybe get on another board if you're not involved with anything, get on a board of the DBC or the Chamber or something, where you start to see the workings.
Nice step up.
Yeah, and get to know how these things work, so.
You know, we're about one minute away.
Yeah, we're, we're in the window.
Coming on. I wanted to ask one, one last question. You know, if you look at the issues, but maybe even beyond issues, unfortunately, kind of the pandemic, what do you think are maybe two or three things that the select board, thinking in Benton specifically, have to really wrap their hands around, wrap their brains around, speak intelligently to the public about? What are the next steps?
I think one of the difficult things with the municipality structure is to be in sync with the schools. I think that's a big thing coming up, is to make sure that the schools, the businesses, the community are ready to go at the same speed and coming out together and getting just the ones, just what's safe, what's safe. If we're gonna keep some protocols, even after people have vaccinated, and they're going for, trying to get things over. So, all right, we're gonna switch over. I'm Greg Ryan-Hough, this is Matt Harrington. We're with the Bennington Fire Department. It is town meeting day in Vermont, and I'm gonna switch you over to our town clerk, Cassandra Barbo, with the results of tonight's elections. Thank you for voting, and thanks for tuning in.
Thanks so much, guys. So I will just be announcing town meeting results right now because of all of the school districts, including so many other towns, and I don't have those results yet. Most likely, it will be tomorrow by the time I get everything from the tech center. All those, there's many, many towns aligned in the area, so. Should we have town meeting? Let me just make sure I can read careless handwriting real quick. Don't want to get jammed up. Yeah, I know, I'm actually just making sure. Okay. I did it really nice and clear, I promise. It's been a long day, so I guess I'll have a little bit for us. Okay, so just to kind of ballpark things as the day went today, real quick, looking at the machines at the end of the night, I, everyone's putting two ballots in the machine, so I have to do some quick math and division and all that. But it's looking like around seventeen to eighteen hundred people voted today, which is low. We had a higher-than-normal absentee voting, but through the door was a little tough today. I know it was really cold and windy earlier. I commend all those, all those guys that stood out there most of the day. We were tired today. So, annual town meeting, twenty twenty-one, for select board, our first race is the vote for two, the three-year seat. Chris Bates, one eighty-seven. Mike Bethel, two eighty-eight. Jim Carroll, nine forty-seven. Tina Cook, six forty-one. Gary Corey, six seventy-two. Colleen Harrington, one fifty-five. Kevin Hoyt, one fifty-six. Nancy White, three ten. And this does include North Benton as well, so your winners there are Jim Carroll and Gary Corey. For our select board, the one-year unexpired term, vote for one. Mike Bethel, two ninety-nine. Philip Gerard, one thirteen. Tom Haley, nine seventy. Colleen Harrington, one thirty-two. Kevin Hoyt, one thirty-one. So our winner there is Tom Haley. For our town clerk, Cassandra Barbo, fifteen sixty-nine. Article one, which is the town budget. Yes, twelve fifty-five. No, four eighty-one. Article two, a penny for parks. Yes, eleven eighty. No, five sixty-three. Article three, the charter change for the mayoral form of government. Yes, seven thirty-five. No, ten thirty-eight. Article four, the first article about cannabis retailers. Yes, eleven eighty-two. No, five ninety-three. Article five, the cannabis control integrated license article. Yes, eleven sixty-four. No, six oh five. Article six is the annual stipend to the select board members. Yes, nine oh two. No, eight sixty-eight. Article seven, Benton Tony Association Against Child Abuse. Yes, thirteen fifty-two. No, four twenty-two. Article eight, Project Against Violent Encounters. Yes, twelve forty-five. No, five thirty. Article nine, Re-Known Retired and Senior Volunteer Program. Yes, twelve ninety-five. No, four seventy-one. Article ten, Rock, Community Action in Southwestern Vermont. Yes, eleven twenty-one. No, six twenty-nine. Article eleven, Vermont Center for Independent Living. Yes, twelve seventy. No, four ninety-seven. Article twelve, Southwestern Vermont Council on Waging. Yes, thirteen oh one. No, four seventy-seven. Article thirteen, Tutorial Center. Yes, ten fifty-nine. No, six ninety-four. Article fourteen, Benton Project Independence. Yes, eleven ninety-six. No, five sixty-one. Article fifteen, Benton Frequent. Yes, thirteen oh four. No, four seventy-five. Article sixteen, Sunrise Family Resource Center. Yes, ten sixty-four. No, six seventy-five. Article seventeen, VNA Hospice in the Southwest Region. Yes, thirteen nineteen. No, four forty-three. And Article eighteen, Benton County Coalition for the Homeless. Yes, eleven ninety-nine. No, five sixty-five. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.